Special meeting for the public hearing for today, February twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Madam President, please call Row.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd. Here. Trustee Zupan.
Present.
Let the record show that Trustee Jones did call. Said he would be able to make it. Um, this hearing is for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Um, and then our own engineer, Jim Donnigan is going to explain. Um, explain this to us. This is something that we do every year, so, um, this will be for the first time. Uh, trustees that didn't have done this before can kind of see what we have. This is one of the public hearings that we have every year for different aspects of the village. So I will turn this over to our resident chairman, Mr. Jim Donnigan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is required by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in accordance with the village's notice of intent for the Illinois General Permit, I L R forty. And the permit is performed on a five-year cycle. The next NOI is due by October first of two thousand and twenty for the new permit cycle beginning in two thousand and twenty-one. So first of all, um, this is the M P D S program, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And it's a permit for an M S four, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system, uh, community, which Sock Village is. The goal is to eliminate pollutants from entering the storm sewer and detention ponds and depositing into rivers, lakes, creeks, which are the ultimate outlet points for Sock Village. These would be the Lansing Drainage Ditch and Deer Creek. There are six minimum control measures, or M C Ms. The first is public education and outreach. So what the village has done this past year to inform the public is, first of all, the annual report has been posted to the village's website. And secondly, a pollution prevention flyer was also posted to the village's website. A reminder, do not dump oil, paint, or other chemicals down the sewer or water bodies. Do not like that. Also, please clean up after your dogs in your yard and parks. Uh, secondly, uh, the second M C M is public involvement and participation. So this public hearing is an example of that. The village welcomes public involvement. Call Public Works if you notice any spills in the village's streams. Sock Village hosted a community cleanup day on April twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen to clean up around the village buildings and public right-of-ways. The third measure is illicit discharge detection and elimination. The village has an ordinance that it uses to address illegal discharges to village waterways. Public Works has identified all outfalls within the village. The village maintains an up-to-date sewer atlas that indicates all the outfalls. And finally, the village's goal is to inspect twenty percent of the outfalls on an annual basis. Fourth minimum control measure is control of construction site storm water runoff. The village has an erosion control ordinance in place to address construction site storm water runoff. Developers are required to provide a storm water pollution prevention plan, which addresses how to prevent erosion at construction sites. Developers are required to inspect their sites weekly during construction and after rain events. The fifth measure is post-construction storm water management. The village has a post-construction ordinance in place to address long-term control of storm water pollution from newly developed sites. Final inspections are required before the developer can leave the site. Detention is required for all developments in the village. Detention ponds and other post-construction measures build throughout settlements prior to settlements being released to the environment. And the final M C M is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The village conducts street sweeping, branch pickup, and leaf collection periodically throughout the year. Village's goal is to clean twenty percent of the village's catch basin per year to prevent the collected material from reaching the village's waterways. Village requests the public's help, help in inspecting inlets and catch basins and keeping them clear for breeding. Robinson Engineering or village staff will develop a municipal operations program, storm water management program for storm water best management practices. So our annual activities moving forward. First, the annual report is made to the I E P A each year by June first. Ordinances and the storm sewer atlas are reviewed yearly. Public Works will conduct in-house training for good housekeeping practices. Public Works will mow and remove litter from detention ponds. Public Works is participating in a watershed group organized to implement control measures that will reduce chloride contamination in the watershed receiving streams. And finally, Robinson Engineering will ensure that developments comply with storm water ordinances and floodplain regulations. So now, Mayor, if you would like to open it up for questions to the board or the public, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, at this time, um, I'll open it up to the, um, board. If the board has any questions in regards to, um, the presentation.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Um, who am I?
I'm sorry. A question, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know what kind of problems have we had in the last, let's say, two or three years? You know, have we had any, uh, you know, uh, places where we had to mack up the sewer or something like that? You know, where it's just covered? Stuff we had, do you have anything noted through the, through the village?
In terms of just flooding?
Yeah, for flooding.
If flooding really isn't covered within this program, it's more pollution of waterways.
Okay, so we haven't had a real big pollution problem?
No, to my knowledge, there has not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the, uh, public. Do they have any, anyone in the audience has any questions to ask our engineer in regards to this particular agenda? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved back.
Removed by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Todd. Uh, any questions? Madam President, please call Row.
Brewer, yes. Grant, Jones, Tate, Todd.
Yes.
Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. We will have our board meeting in approximately eight minutes. Mayor.
You guys can come to the big kids' table. Thank you. Some people like my jokes.
They're not deaf, are they?
I'm not listening to you when you say roll eyes. I'm not big kids anymore. What are you? Not me.
He's just a kid.
That's not so bad.
What did he say?
Last ten, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah. How you guys doing?
When I walked in here.
What's up?
And I looked down.
Yeah, but it was warm.
Yeah, it was like, uh, somebody. Yeah.
I was ready.
It takes all kinds, right?
Maybe she wants to go home. They just say she's gone. So that's not so bad.
Yeah?
She don't, she don't like.
I don't, I don't.
I don't want to hear it.
Why do you turn to a pumpkin?
Sure, yes. Oh, pretty good.
I know you say that, but.
Again? I take very.
Seriously? I thought you were joking. I thought you were joking. Well, you know what? You know, why do I listen? But it might be a good thing. But listen. Yes. Oh, I'm still. You have a trouble. No, don't, don't start with that. You want to start a mover? Oh, what? It is really. Sure, one thing is it's a, and by the, it's a hundred percent story. Five thousand. Well, they repeat it so often during the day. Yeah. But then it, and then they repeat it later. Oh, yeah, we don't know. Those are saying they, 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 they love it. And then sometimes. Yeah. That's what they do. Yeah, yeah, they do. Fortunately.
Stand for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam President, please call Row.
Trustee Brewer.
Yeah.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd. Here. Trustee Zupan.
Here.
Okay, um, I have number four approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for November twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen.
So, same.
Removed by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions? Madam President, please call Row.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Tate.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
No.
I have number five, public comments. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matters pertaining to the business of Sock Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak within three minutes and may not engage in debate. State your name, please.
Captain Ashley. Just a question asking about the solar project. It didn't seem like the residents that, uh, for the, uh, are wanting to be voted through. Now, um.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Did you say a question about what project?
The solar project.
Oh, solar, okay.
They've seen like they've worked with it and be having it voted through. And I know that there's going to be a letter sent to them to ask about it. Now, if they don't want it, they vote against it, does it matter to you?
Well, first of all, we haven't gathered, have gathered all the necessary information that we need to, if you notice, it's not in the agenda. So we still have to really plan, say, to gather more information from that contractor. So right now, um, it's something that would be taken under advisement when it gets to that point, when it gets to the voting point. So, uh, it's not a matter of the residents voting on it. It's a matter of, first of all, the due diligence, that, that particular contractor has to present the results before we even get to that point. Because there's other steps before it goes on.
My other question, I meant, is why, or did they come before the board before they contacted or leased with a private person? Why would they come to House and Land Hospital, lease property that we own in this village?
I'm not, you said why? That property is privately owned.
Correct.
Okay.
So instead of going to a private person, shouldn't they come before the board and see if we got property to be leased first?
That's their priority if you do that, now. I mean, it's a private upon private matter. If that person wanted to lease that not knowing what the board or what the village is wanting to do, that's, that's, that's on them. You know, I can't tell a person not to lease something because I'm, now I'm anticipating whether or not the board willing or not accepting, so.
My thing is, we should be the ones renting or leasing property that we own, so that we get.
I understand what you're saying.
Is what I'm saying.
You know, but if they, they chose that spot, it's like having a house built on the lot. I mean, you can buy the land, but you have to do everything it takes in order to make that happen. So you would think that you would go to where you want to actually erect that and find out what they have and then go from there, but.
Another thing is about the phone systems. And I noticed that last week they said we needed four different companies to make these phone systems work properly. How many phone, uh, companies? How many companies do we have to have the Comcast and?
One minute.
Now?
Okay.
How many do we use?
Okay, first of all, let me reiterate, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not fault. I should have said maybe clearly or whatever, but what we're doing now is in age. So from now on, what I'll do is ask, get all the questions that you have right outside and down and then answer them. Keep going back and forth like this. It's not, it's not what we're supposed to do. But however, I will answer that question. And it's not for, it's, it's companies that present, they're presenting and they presented to the village what they could do. It's not that we need four phone companies to do one job. It's if three companies came or three companies to bid their best and then some to voice and make a decision. How much money?
Oh, I, I understood that. They said we needed Comcast and, um, who we have now, I don't know the names of the companies, but they said that we needed four different companies. All of them.
Thank you.
Nurse Catherine?
Is that my? Go ahead, go ahead, Nurse Catherine.
Um, Sunday night Bluegrass was open. And before we could do anything, we had to put the tables back, we had to sweep the floors, and wash all the tables. When we finished, we had to do the same thing. Now, this is getting a little tiresome, going in there and having to clean after and before. We go in there to do our stuff and we have to clean up after other people. I guess there's a baby shower or something. There's paper crumbs and food all over the floor. The tables were in a shambles. Nothing was put back the way it should have been. We were tired before we could even start. We would like, uh, some phone numbers to call people to come up and check it out before we get there. And we're put down to two, two nights a month, to two Sundays a month, the second and fourth. Because it's in the bylaws or whatever that any organization or anything can only be in there twice a month. Why is the rent in there four times a month? And my other, one other thing is, has anybody found out anything about the bricks? Now, this has gone on long enough. Thank you.
Okay, um, in regard to the condition of how the senior center was left, I will talk to the chairman of the senior committees and find out from him and see if, if there's any measures put into place after it's been rented or used that someone comes and, um, inspects it for the next usage. And, um, as far as the bricks are concerned, I saw a memo. Um, I'm sure it was passed on, but I will definitely look into that tomorrow to find out if I did see where bricks were ordered or paid for. And, um, I don't know what folder that, um. I was just informed that those bricks that were ordered and, um, do be placed, are to be placed in the spring. So I don't know, right now, I guess it may, could be a reason why, but they will be placed in the spring. But I will follow up tomorrow and make sure that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Heidi Parker. Uh, my question concerns new business tonight. And I, uh, only the explanation of, um, V O I P, which I believe stands for village-owned land payment numbers. Um, I was trying to look back on all the agendas to see if maybe it had been discussed before. However, it has nothing on the website since the sandwich, well, maybe, I don't know. Nothing. So my question tonight is, why would, what is this?
I'm trying.
My question is, what is V O I P? Why do we need it? Why do we want to pay about six thousand dollars a month for this? And, uh, it's a host of first communications, S T C technologies, and Nextiva. Uh, my question also is, how many village-owned properties are there to justify six thousand dollars a month in expenses to do whatever it is? So I wondered if you could explain that, please?
Okay, um, is that all? Okay, that's, I guess, you're talking about item eleven D, which is village-owned land. Um, that's something that was brought before the board last week. And we're just voting on to go ahead with, um, a request to have this land looked at. And that land is the land that is probably is on the end of Cerber Plaza, um, right next to, uh, there's a church right there, but it used to be a cleaners and a laundry mat. And we're, we're, we're looking to, um, the board is, we're, we're asking the board to request to go further with that. As far as D, E, and F, it's a motion, V O I P. It's a motion to, we, we had a, um, last week, a vendor come in and explained to the board with three different items of three different vendors that wanted to do business with the village on our phone system. So we put the lowest one first to be voted on. If that's voted on affirmatively, then we don't have to do the next two. But if it's not, then we vote the next one. And if that's not voted on, then we do the third one. It's not, but then we, we broadly for the board to be voted on for a new, a different phone service that saves us approximately thirty thousand dollars a year, next three years, and, and costs for our phone system. So it's not six thousand dollars a month for the phone system. These, each one of these are individual contractors.
May I ask what that has to do with village-owned land?
It has nothing to do, it's a separate request, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
There's nothing to do with, B has nothing to do with C, D, and E.
Why is it saying, uh, radiation use?
Perfect.
A V O I P, does that stand for village-owned land?
No, ma'am, no.
What does it stand for?
Voice over the internet. Further.
Okay, I wasn't here last week, so.
Okay.
Then I couldn't look back at the agendas for the.
Okay.
The minutes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We're going to, um, next one is the manager's report. I have very little, I just wanted to put out there that I'm looking for volunteers to be on the zoning board. And, um, also, um, will be explained as, um, soon. Particularly, we're going to have a cleanup date in the village, in the, at the village, April twenty-eighth. I look for volunteers and reaching out for people that would like to come out and, um, help us clean the, the village period in different areas that we, uh, need cleaning after this storm and really after the winter. So that day, if you can mark it on your calendar, April twenty-eighth, at eight o'clock in the morning here at the village. And probably, you probably have emanated over at the, uh, senior center. And all you need to bring is dress for the weather. They'll, we'll provide everything else, and just basically dress for the weather and some, some that you have to be outside here. So those are the two things that I have. That being said, I will go to the village clerk, Mr. Margaret Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to follow up on something we talked about a couple of months ago, which is student government standing. We have day four, um, that activity for village hall and that will be April the twenty-fourth here at the village. We will be at, um, the school district the week prior to that on that Monday. And then it's anticipated that, that Friday, we will host a luncheon for all of the students that takes part in either one. The school district. The school district will be providing transportation in all instances, so, that piece I know was a concern of ours, but that has been taken care of. Another thing I would like to report on are the vehicle stickers, we're in the midst of a art contest, uh, with the students at three of our schools, and the deadline for turning that in, their submissions will be March the seventh, and shortly after that, we will be judging, anyone interested in helping to judge, you're more than welcome, uh, if you would like to be one of the people that choose our next vehicle sticker. In terms of the bricks, the bricks have been placed, the order has been placed, and as the mayor reported, it has, they will be placed in the spring. Right now, with this weather, there's absolutely no way that, uh, our crew can put that, put the bricks out right now. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarny?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't done this before, or something, okay. Thank you, Mayor. We have started design on the replacement of a riser pipe within the west elevator tank. Riser pipe has corroded over time and has developed numerous leaks. Public Works has been able to stop these leaks with pipe repair clamps, but the pipe is beyond its service life. In order to keep this tank in operation, the riser pipe needs to be replaced. We will prepare a design to renew this component of the elevated tank and serve the village dependently for decades to come. We will prepare contract documents for the project to be bid in the coming months. The elevated tank will need to be taken out of service for a brief time while the riser pipe is being replaced, but we will minimize the time that the contractor is allowed for this operation. That concludes our report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Reports of departments, department heads, finance and administration, Mr. Mohar Rawal?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Fire Department Chief Al Starbray?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Over the period from February the tenth through February the twenty-third, fire department responded to twenty-seven calls, five fire lines, two vehicle accidents, six mutual aides out of town, three ambulance PD assistance, one stove fire, two vehicle fires, a gas leak, a pole on fire, and four citizens assisted. We're in a storm that we just, uh, have over here this past week or so. And, just for everybody's information, we have some more rain coming in tonight and tomorrow, and according to, uh, the weather map, excuse me, everybody's got a different opinion on what it's gonna get, so, that is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Police report, Chief Robert Kowalski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. The past two weeks, we had four hundred and sixty calls for service and ten arrests. Few cases of interest on February fourteenth while on patrol, Officer Gary Luke was, uh, attentive and monitoring the Illinois State Police Emergency Road Network, and heard a broadcast by the Chicago Heights Police Department of a stolen vehicle. Several days later, while his atten, with his attentiveness to dispatch, Officer Luke spotted the vehicle and verified it was, in fact, a stolen vehicle that was dispatched earlier. Several subjects were arrested, and one of the occupants was found to be a missing person from Lansing. On February sixteenth, officers responded to two separate calls of stabbing victims. One victim was stabbed and had his ear partially bit off, another victim, being a pregnant female, was battered. Defender was located and locked away and arrested. Cook County State District Office was called to review, upgrading the charges to felonies due to severity of the inflicted wounds, but felony charges were denied. Defender was still charged with several counts of misdemeanor battery. Finally, on February nineteenth, officers were contacted and requested a check on the well-being of a fifteen-year-old of the twenty-nine-hundred block of two-twenty-fourth Street. Officers were unable to gain entry and had to gain permission to forcibly enter the residence. The fifteen-year-old was found inside, breathing but unresponsive. Subject was transported to St. Mark's Hospital for treatment. Uh, again, a reminder, National Night Out, we previously registered with National Association of Town Watch, with the twenty-eighteen National Night Out set for August seventh. Many of you have already approached me, and I appreciate it. If you'd still like to volunteer or have any suggestions, please feel free to email me at sockvillagepd, it's sockvillagepd, one word, at gmail dot com. You can also message me on Facebook, call me direct, at my number, uh, seven oh eight, seven five three five one five. Again, and I'll keep reminding everyone, prescription drug drop-off, uh, is on April twenty-eighth between eight a.m. to three p.m., in the lobby of Sock Village Police Department. We're asking that anyone who would like to dispose of their unwanted prescription drugs, feel free to use this opportunity to do so. And finally, uh, Woodpack Grand Opening, on February twenty-first, I along with other, uh, officials, were invited to the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new expansion of Woodpack Corporation. It was truly an honor and a pleasure to be among the dignitaries that attended this event. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the board for the invitation, and on a personal note to the residents of Sock Village, this event truly showed promise for the future of Sock Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development, Director Sherry Gudzinski?
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's four new marginal home permits that have been issued in Weatherstone. Two, um, of the homes have been completed, and the remaining two are in the process of being built. I sent out letters to all the businesses in regards to keeping the property and dumpster area clean from litter and debris. I also sent them a copy of the temporary sign permit ordinance, letting them know they have to obtain permits for the temporary signs that they're placing in the pathways, and it can only be done twice a year, for thirty days maximum, and they have to remain in good condition or they're gonna get sicked. Uh, went over the, the phone place, they have a couple of those flat banners that are falling apart, and they need to remove them. And then, on February, um, twenty-third, I sent an email out to the board of trustees and reference to the community solar garden. I explained that this type of business isn't allowed in any zoning district, and I needed to know if the board wants to move forward, uh, with the zoning. The only trustees that responded were trustee Todd and Brewer, and they're not in favor of it. So, that concludes that, concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. And tonight with development, um, director, uh, Mr. Joseph Wizwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did have a prepared report for this evening, um, however, I just wanted to inform the board that we did, uh, complete the interview process, uh, with the consultants for the comprehensive plan. Um, both of the consultants that were interviewed did a fantastic job, um, it was a very tough decision, um, the mayor went over the, uh, presentations, and we've recommended, our recommendation, to see that board, um, and I'm waiting for them to officially inform both of the candidates, um, that did the presentations, before we can publicly release that information, however, I'd be happy to share that, uh, with the, the board members, uh, off record. But, uh, it was a tough decision, um, the comprehensive plan will begin, um, sometime next month, we will have a, um, a kickoff meeting, um, with the public invited as well, so, looking forward to getting that underway. As a final note here, um, with the Rinnpack Grand Opening, uh, I know some of the trustees were not, uh, able to attend, um, the general manager there has invited, uh, you over there, if you haven't been over there, just to kind of take it to the facility, so, if, uh, any of you would like to do that, uh, please let me know, and I'll make sure we can arrange that. Um, they have invested, uh, several million dollars in the equipment that they have there, one of their production lines, um, kind of goes from the beginning to end, and one of those production lines is, is about ten million dollars, so, they have seven over there, so, it's a pretty, uh, pretty, uh, impressive facility, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? This is the report from the Public Works, um, Department head, Kevin Weller. Um, item number one, the next upgrade will, will be, um, to twenty-one sixteen to twenty-one hundred, two hundred and twenty-third place, twenty-six feet of water main, four new service connections, and a new hydrant, all affected. Residents will be notified of the board order when the job starts and when it's lifted. Item number two, the staff has responded to a rainfall of three point five inches and an instant snowmelt of two feet. Residents are reminded to move vehicles from the street after two inches of snow, and do not throw debris in the streets, this contributes to a quick flooding of the roadway. Item number three, the staff has made repairs to trucks and equipment. Truck number two, front plow attachment needed welding repairs, leaks in the fuel tank, repairs pending, and pending, and tying parts are in. Key switch, truck number one, fuel tank and straps and parts needed to be ordered, lift cylinder leaking, and then truck number five, hydraulic problems in the plow repairs, bad fitting debris, and lines need flushing, truck number seventy-eight, the plow lights electric issue, electric issues were pending. Item number four, staff is working on the north side, shut-off list, number five, staff is working on the B-box digs, jets, and leaks, this is ongoing. Item number six, staff will be out with the pothole patching when the conditions and the time is allowed. Item number seven, received second order for the hundred ton of salt. And, and item number eight, working with the village engineers on the final draft to start work on the ball field of the works, will do some demo to save money, the rest will be completed by the contractors. And finally, item number nine, several repairs in progress at both warehouses. That ends the report from Mr. Kevin Weller. Reports of committees and commissions, amusement committee, chairman, trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Uh, senior advisory council, chairman, Mr. Emmett Farm, this way, Mr. Mike Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Only thing, you guys, we're, uh, working on our calendar for March, we ready, uh, five o'clock.
Okay, I do have a question, it was raised a few minutes ago, I was looking to see when you hear. When you rent out the, um, senior center, um, is there someone that's there after it's over with to kind of look and see the condition that is left there? Is there anyone that comes up? Cause I don't, I don't know if you take, I know what the community center they do, but the senior center, I don't know if you take a deposit or whatever, but is there anyone that comes to make sure that it was taken care of before they give the deposit back?
Yeah, uh, we do take a deposit. We have really assigned everybody to, to check, and I'm sure that, uh, next week, I did hear that pretty much the same as that.
Okay.
So, by next week, we need to, you know, we need to assign someone, uh, check after it, you know, to get, so we can have them to check out.
Okay, thank you so much. Reports of trustees, the standing committees, public service committee, trustee Bernice Brewer?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Budget and finance trustee, Roger Grant?
Number four, Mr. Mayor.
Housing and the governmental relations, trustee Cecil Tate. Ordinance review committee, trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance review committee will have their next meeting on March eighth, six-thirty, here at the Village Hall near the Batunda, and that is my report.
Thank you. Public safety committee trustee, Beth Zupha?
Our next committee meeting will be next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday, March seventh, six p.m. here at Village Hall, and I'm just gonna add that I appreciated the additional, uh, presence last month, or earlier this month, I should say, we did have a few new faces. I hope you're coming back next week, cause I'd like to have you there, and, and I'm hoping you will continue to, to participate. Uh, I also want to piggyback on, though, what the police chief was saying regarding National Night Out in August, it isn't just about the police department, it's about the village-wide and all of our first responders, you know, emergency management agency, the fire department as well, uh, so, it's really a broader, um, event than just that, and we've started talking about it in our meetings, uh, and will continue to do so as we plan activities, uh, special, um, things to come, so, if you're interested in helping with that, you know, like the police chief said, you can reach out to him, but you can also reach out to me, or come to a meeting next Wednesday night, because, like I said, we will be talking about it then as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, the next thing, motion to, uh, a new business, the accounts payable that was on the agenda was a typo, so I will need a motion to suspend the rules to accept the, uh, agenda, I'm sorry, accept the accounts payable for the twenty-seventh, it was on the twentieth, that was, that was a typo, so I do need a, uh, motion to, uh, suspend the rule and accept the accounts payable effective, I'm sorry, for the twenty-seventh of February. Moved by trustee Brewer?
No, it was Tyler.
I'm sorry. Moved by trustee Tyler, second by trustee, um, Grant, any questions?
Can you refresh, I remember you told us, um, how much it was for, cause I don't seem to have a copy.
Okay, I was gonna bring that up, I think, when we, when we actually vote for it, I do have the amount right here. So, how much the, the account payable is?
You took the one we just voted on, um, last week, yeah. The, the one we voted, wanted to vote on last week, but you said it's a typo, it's how much?
No, I said the, this, on this agenda, that is under, um, new bedroom's motion for the accounts payable, the typo was two twenty, it was really for two twenty.
I think that, uh, trustee, uh, is referencing last week when we took the, uh, consensus to, uh, for the accounts payable for, uh, the amount.
Oh, so, that's okay, well, I can do that after we still got the motion on the floor.
So, when the, we're, so confused, uh, the, um, the thing we've been, the, the house pay group's been voted on, is this one, April twenty?
I didn't ask for motion to vote on that, I asked for motion to suspend the rule to incorporate or to add, cause it was a typo, on the, um, agenda, and it had, the typo was to, um, approve the minutes of two twenty, and it should've been two twenty-seven. That's, that's what I have on the floor, to suspend the rule, and ask for motion to make that, to do that, and that was what the question was. Any other questions? Madam Plurk, Lady Haller Rawal?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried. Now, you're asking how much the, two hundred, I'm sorry, February twentieth, accounts payable?
Yeah, that's the one that's in question, right?
No.
The one, well, I think she's talking about the one from last week, the one that was ninety-four thousand dollars.
How much is it?
Ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and six cents. The one from last week?
That we asked for a consensus.
That we asked for a consensus for, yes.
So, that's gonna be added on to this one?
No, that, that, okay, that-
That's separate?
That was a consensus to, so we could go there and pay that.
Okay, so, we ended up paying ninety-four thousand?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
Mayor?
Yes?
You did mention last week, though, when you asked for the consensus, you did say that we would formally vote on it tonight, so, as long as we've got the motion to suspend the rules, I would ask that we consider making a motion to approve the accounts payable where the consensus was approved last week in the amount of- where the consensus was approved last week in the amount of
ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and six cents.
Okay.
So can we have a copy? Can I get a copy from Grant?
Yes, I mean.
It's the same thing we had last week.
No, I don't have a copy here.
Oh, I don't have a copy.
I was wondering, can I get a copy, you know? Yeah.
You want it now?
No, I'll take his word for it.
Okay. Okay, if we vote on that, it has to be added to the amount that we're voting on now. Well, I'll put it this way. I'll accept the motion to ratify the consensus vote for last week for the accounts payable in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and six cents.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Ty. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Ty? Yes. Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, now I will accept the motion to approve the accounts payable dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan and second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, last week Mohan was out a couple days, so I couldn't get these answers. First of all, well, a couple questions first. We have Dr. Strata on here again for union contracts, which she should, I mean, I'm sorry, professional services for S.B.P. Is that union contracts? Is that for union negotiations too? The, it's on page, I'm sorry, page one?
Yes, that's what that particular, that particular, let's see, it's dated one twenty-eight, yes.
Okay, and also down here it has Leslie Wizard incident. Can, for four year, can you tell me what's that about, do you know? It's on the same line, Leslie Wizard incident, C. Sita reviewed four year.
No, I don't know what that one is.
Okay, and then up above that, it has, I guess it's a lack of fiscal dentler. We've handled for negotiations too. So we paid Dr. Strata, so now we paying attorneys to them, right?
The attorney is to review?
What, Dr. Strata has already done, right?
No, the attorney is to review the legal, legality and negotiation and legality to everything. So you have to, to basically, as you go forth, you have to put some paperwork together. You have to get all the negotiating, are out of each and every area when you start negotiations down with Dr. Strata, as I stated before. The more you do that, you got to run it through the lawyers to make sure that it's correct.
Page three, we paying the lawyers again, nine thousand dollars for police negotiations?
That's their, that's their part, that's where they started, yes. That comes out to police department, yes.
On the last page, you had Kane McKinnon. And we paid him, let's see, one, two, three, four, for various amounts on research and all that sort of stuff. Is there any, have you copies of those bills to find out who, what are these particular, whatever questions, whatever research they were doing for us? Because there was a big deal about what I called, but I'd like to know who initiated these deals where we paying them a little over eight thousand dollars for Kane McKinnon. So we got economic development on here, professional services, research analysts, and I'd like to know who made those bills.
Okay. Did you have a chat with Mohan or did he?
I'm saying Mohan's been out a lot this week, so I haven't.
He wasn't out at all this way, he was out last week.
Okay, well, I didn't catch him, never.
He was here every day, yeah, today and yesterday.
I didn't catch him.
Okay. Any other question?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Actually, I have two. On page one, with Olson and Sturk, they have correspondence for a dress code policy?
Yes.
Is that what we have our H.R. person for? Or did they correspond with the attorney to make sure that it's correct?
Okay, the dress code policy was something I ran through. I had implemented the dress code policy and I wanted to make sure that I wouldn't be going back and forth with the union. So I just wanted to make sure that what I, in the language I put it in, was done correctly.
Okay, and also on the same page, it would be under professional services with his builder, O'Donnell. It says ordinance resolution scavenger, scavenger license. Now, I'm not seeing if you come before the ordinance review committee, so I did ask Mohan, but I, I don't know that he was sure of what that was. It would be at the very bottom.
Okay, I see it now.
Yeah, ordinance resolutions.
I have to, I don't know if that was something that Sherry was working with them about to find out if we could change it. But I think that's what it was because me, and if we're going to change it and because right now it's only permitted for two licenses and we're going to open up more. So they wanted to make sure that the language that we presented is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you one more question since trustee Ty brought it up? Okay, dress code policy, what, you know, what we, what we asking for? What are you asking for in the dress code policy?
Basically, to dress professionally in business like when you're at the front desk. I'm not going to go any further than that because that's a personnel issue, but when you represent the village, you should represent the village professionally, not just as if you just came from, you know, wherever. So if you're at front talking to residents, you should present yourself as a, which you are an advocate for the village, which you would come to us. And that's, I have another dress code that was never implemented.
And then also, did you notice that on this, on page one, it also has something on here for economic development for Kane McKinnon? We also paid him three hundred dollars for that too? I'm, I'm just wondering, who's running up all these bills for Kane McKinnon? And I can't get an answer, simple answer about TIPS.
What do you mean who's running up all these bills? I mean, bills have happened, I'm sorry trustee, but bills happen. But there's nobody just purposely running up bills. I'm trying to make sure, when, when you go to your professionals, which is your lawyers, it's because you want to make sure that you, first of all, that you're doing it correctly. Even though we may feel we are, when I'm not a lawyer and I'm supposed to be one, so I ask the lawyers of certain things to make sure that it's done right so it doesn't come out later. So that's the reason why I go to the lawyers. Now, someone else goes to the lawyers, but actually I will supposedly know about it, but sometimes I don't know about it. So.
I'm talking about Kane McKinnon.
Kane McKinnon is our people for our TIP, for money, number words for, and they're one of our people that we consult in with our TIP. This particular incident, I'm pretty sure it was something, I'm not sure, I cannot truthfully tell you what it was for. But anything that's on here, I'm sure that it was done for a, a, a reason. I can't tell you that one, but tomorrow, Mohan will be here and, you know, I don't know when you got this economic, I'm sorry, when you got this accounts payable, but he's been here every day this week, so.
Well, my question is, when I called, let me say, back in July when we first started, it was Kane McKinnon charged us like twelve hundred bucks because I asked questions. And then I'm noticing on this particular accounts payable, all these charges for Kane McKinnon, I just like to know who's, who they're, you know, why are they charging us all this money? They got three hundred here, they got so many on the other pages, you know? And then I'm, I'm just wondering, how come these bills weren't brought out and shown to the other trustees? But, you know, I'll get a copy, no problem.
The bills, the bills, I mean, Mohan has bills, we, we have bills. We might have paid something I have a bill for. But I can't sit here and recite to you every single thing that's on this accounts payable and tell you exactly what every single thing is. I'm here a lot, but I'm not here that much to know. But there are copies of the bills. We have the copies of the bills, I know Mohan does, if you want to come in and ask about that sometimes. But as, also, you know, we, we, hopefully you don't take all day with that one person for that, for those areas because there's other things that they have to do too. But I'm sure that's not a problem, that one particular bill is, you know, not a problem. Any other question? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item is the approval of ordinance amending the C. schedule. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Your next order is a motion to approve the request for approval of the village-owned land. You go forth with that with these pin numbers, thirty-two dash twenty-five dash three oh two, dash zero two six dash zero zero zero, and also pin number thirty-two dash twenty-five dash three oh two dash oh two seven dash zero 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 zero.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have questions. Mr. Mayor, I talked to the economic director and I'd just like to share some information he gave us about these two particular parcels, and if you're correct or wrong, that these two particular parcels that we want to sell, there may have been, and I'm saying may have been, environmental issue where the laundromat and the bowling alley used to be. So when we sell the, sell the land as is, that the buyer is taking the land as is and we're not responsible for any liability relating to environmental issues. Am I not right?
That's the, the, or the, that's the legality that they want to have is buyer as is. And it's not the bowling alley. Bowling alley's been down for years. It's the laundromat and cleaners, the bowling alley land we're not selling.
Well, I, I do, I say laundromat, I say bowling alley. I meant the laundromat and cleaners, okay? And it's my understanding that we selling this land, even though it's in TIP four, that once we sell this land, that if we get a buyer, a proposal for that particular land, that we, it'll be back in TIP four and we can use TIP money to help them redevelop the land. Is that not what you told me?
Are you, are you asking that question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get Joe to explain that to me again.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking you. Is that the question that you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, he, he knows.
No, I'm just, the reason I'm asking is, are you going, are you going to go back and forth? Or once you get that answered, there's another question that you have.
Probably, but, you know, that's the one I'm at right now.
Go ahead, Mr. Weller.
Okay. The request for proposals is basically for the sale of the land as you described. I would, just, for the record, your first pin number, there should be an extra zero again. That's probably my fault, Madam Clerk, but just as a matter of record, if you want to add that zero. But in answer to trustee Brewer's question, you know, the property is in a TIP district. It won't change whether it changes ownership from the village to another entity. However, the property will go back to the tax rolls. The village board could consider a number of different options in terms of the redevelopment of that property. But what we decided to do, instead of just selling the property and letting it, let someone buy it and then just let it sit there for the next five or ten years, is in the request for proposals, there is a plan, a proposal for redevelopment of that property. So whoever will buy it will present the village with a plan to redevelop that property as part of that redevelopment expense they can request. Doesn't mean that they get it, doesn't mean that there's any funds available for it, but they can request assistance through TIP number four. In addition to that, there are other tax incentives, including the class eight, since the property is going to be there for more than two years.
And the only other thing that I want to know is that if we get a buyer for that particular land, can we somehow make it clear that if the buyer discovers an environmental issue later on down the line, I know you're saying as is, but to make it clear in a contract somewhere that South Village won't be responsible for any environmental issues. Because, you know, a lot of times, like, by court writers in our war, it didn't show up for twenty-five years. If this guy, if the buyer comes along, maybe five, ten years old, and an environmental issue comes up there and come back and sue us, I want to know, is there some kind of safeguard we can put in the contract that says that this is actually as is? Even though you say, you tell them that, well, we didn't own that land, but, you know, how things go. I'd like to make clear that South Village is not going to be responsible for any soil contamination because of the cleaners was there. And I do believe, I had somewhere, some paper somewhere that said that they had an environmental issue related to that cleaners. But I want to make sure if South Village is covered, you know, from this environmental, potential, you know, liability, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, and I'd like to speak to that. You know, first of all, there's never been anything that the village has on record that there are any other environmental issue that being said. With respect to your question, the village, by all means, can, can put a, an amendment to the sales agreement that states that, you know, the buyer is buying the property as is and does not accept or will not accept any responsibility for any claims either past, present, or future.
There you go, that's it, past, present, future, can you put that in there?
That, that can most definitely be in the contract. But it won't go in the request for proposals, but in the contract, that, 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 that can be added to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate? Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Also have a motion to approve the ordinance amending the C. schedule. You have it in front of you, we talked about it. It's been put before the ordinance review committee. I'll accept the motion to approve that ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ty, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate? Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Have a motion before you to approve the contract or approve the warrant of first communications to be our phone service for the village of South Village. And the monthly payment will be eighteen hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate? Trustee Ty?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Motion is carried. E. and F. are not part of that because it's, we, we have voted on the other one. Any general comments from the board? Any, uh, general comments from the board of trustees, I'm, I'm sorry, trustee Todd?
No comment at this time.
Trustee Brewer?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, D, E, and F, uh, we talked in the voiceovers, I don't think, uh, well, this is my opinion, that the first communications did not come and give a presentation, if I'm not mistaken. S T C was here, and they gave a very good, um, presentation, and, uh, the third one, uh, they were here, so they, they weren't here, so, um, by us just voting on the, uh, first communications, I don't think we gave, uh, E and F a really fair chance of, you know, being accepted, whatever possible meaning. Uh, S T C, S T C was here, they gave their presentation, you know, and they had a very good presentation, so, and they, they had their stuff all lined up and everything, uh, next, next TIF wasn't here, so I don't know why I could go, you know, do you understand what I mean? We should have had a chance to
I'm gonna try to explain.
To, to, uh, select.
You, you, okay. Why would I go in front of it, who was voted on the first one? If the first one wasn't voted on, and was voted down, then yes, I would go to the next one. But why entertain the next one, because you already, the first one was already accepted? So why would I go to the next one if the first one that was read out, and it was done in, in order of, um, the lowest bid to the highest one? So if it was voted on the first one, and they voted that one, why would I go to the next two? So you want the people that say yes to say no?
I didn't say, uh, you should go to the next one, I said, they weren't, I don't think they were given the fair chance like the first one, even though the bid was there, I'm just, no, I'm just, that's my opinion.
Okay. I thought it was a question, it just
No, I didn't say question, I said it was my opinion.
Trustee Tate. Trustee, uh, Zuphan?
Yeah, sorry, I have, um, a couple questions for the clerk. And I'm, I'm trying to think back to when we talked about student government day, I know you had mentioned that during your report earlier tonight. And for the life of me, I don't remember us saying that this was something we were gonna proceed with, so maybe you had an offline conversation, that's entirely possible, I don't know. Um, so I was just curious to know if anything has been planned ever, if it's still too early for that. And then, uh, also with regards to the village stickers, uh, that was the first I was hearing of that as well, so I'm just gonna guess to say that you had an offline conversation with that as well, um, to get that moving. Are we offering prizes by chance for the village sticker concert, or contest?
For the village sticker, I was going to give out of pocket a twenty-five dollar gift certificate. Um, in terms of the village sticker, I, it was my understanding that it's just a process that normally would take place by the village clerk, and that it really did not require approval or anything. However, I did communicate with the front office as well as with the mayor in terms of the number of stickers that should be ordered. Because as I look at the number of stickers that we ordered for the vehicles, for animal tags, and a couple of other items that we have been known to displace to order year after year, we usually end up with an overage, so we will be ordering a smaller number. In terms of student governing today, we definitely spoke of it, and, uh, I will present those minutes to you, I'll put them in your box. And basically, you all asked for a date, and more specifics, uh, more so than anything you were concerned about the transportation. And so that's why the transportation was a priority in being handled.
Okay, um, if I may, Mayor, just follow up on that. Um, I'll contribute toward the prize for the stickers, to make it a little bit more lucrative, so that if we do this in the future, maybe we get a little bit more participation going forward, so, uh, I'll see you offline about that.
Thank you.
Trustee Grant?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Thank you, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, uh, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank all the trustees, and I see my, um, property assets left, but I did thank them, um, yesterday about the coming out to win pack, and, uh, being, being there, uh, to see, and those that have not had a chance, the trustees that have not had the chance to come out and see that facility, uh, they're worldwide, and, um, they built that second building, and they, they already put in three lines. Each line, I found out, costs ten million dollars to actually put in, but they make thirty million dollars out of that. So, and that's every year. So, um, it was, it's, it's a great thing that, uh, they came from Sweden and all over to, uh, to, to come here. Uh, I've never been to the room with so many different, I call them billionaires, but they're all on the board, and then a couple of billionaires that were there, but I'm just glad they came out to Saw Village, and, and they're doing business with us, and they look, and what they're looking to do is fill up that second, uh, parcel, which is about four hundred thousand square feet, and hopefully, if they do that, then they still have room to build another one. So that's something that I'm hoping that, uh, that they will do, and you can tell they, they're really committed to Saw Village, they've invested in Saw Village. They came from right next door, Saw Chicago Heights, but there was nowhere for them to construct another building, so that's why they came over to Saw Village first, and then they got enough land to put the second building, so hopefully, they'll, they'll, and they, and there's still enough land to put a third one. So I'm just wanted to say thanks to everyone that came out and, uh, and, and saw it, and I thought it was very impressive myself. Um, yesterday, I met with the, uh, pastors of the churches in Saw Village. Um, we're gonna be, um, bringing some things to the village. Um, they're gonna actually help us participate in a lot of areas that we, as far as needing volunteers for, for cleanup day and other aspects, and, um, I just asked them to read on, to meet on a regular basis. Uh, I'll just be a fly on the wall, I just want them to kinda come together, and it's all for the betterment of the residents here in Saw Village. And as we know, the churches are an integral part in any municipality. So I just wanted to say I had six pastors to show up, and two to call in, so this is gonna be an ongoing, they seem interested, and I appreciate that. With that being said, I would undertake the motion to adjourn. It was moved by trustee Brewer, and seconded by trustee Grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold your, motion carried, thank you very much.